We will make the meeting happen now. It's seven thirty-two. We'll call to order. A little gavel action. I'm missing something. Okay. Budget of allegiance, please. Budget of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in its soul, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
One thing I will ask everybody here who speaks this evening, because we have one of our board members, Lucille Renwick, who is participating remote, we can't see her. She can see us and we can hear her. So, we need to talk into the microphone tonight. I've been asked to share that. And I will remind you folks.
Noted, thank you. Attendance sheet is going around. Lucille is with us.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Hi, Lucille.
Okay.
Thanks for being here.
No problem.
In the ether.
Thank the staff for making it happen.
Okay, so we, I know that Cory's unable to make it. Danielle, I don't know. And we have a quorum if we had to vote on anything. Lucille cannot vote via Zoom, I don't believe, but your presence is noted. And we will make sure we have that on the, I'll make a note right now via Zoom. Oh, that's this one. Lucille via Zoom. And Riannon consign, and we'll wait to see if Danielle shows up. Okay, the first item on our agenda is approval of our minutes from our March twenty-third board meeting. If it seems like we were just all here, we just were all here. We pushed our March meeting because we needed to discuss the budget. And there was a conflict with our usual time with the state of the city address. These are the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to look at them earlier? Yes, any questions or comments? They looked fine to me. Very thorough. Good, then I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you, Riannon. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, minutes have been approved. Thank you. And we will move on to our regular business, starting with Frances and our WLS report.
Okay, very good. Good evening, everyone. As I promised the chair earlier this afternoon, I'm going to talk for about forty-five minutes.
You said an hour, Frances. I feel cheated.
And if I develop any sore throat, Lucille, you will be responsible. But I'll try to shout. Okay.
I can hear you just fine, Frances.
Okay. The WLS board met last month. It was a very small agenda, but interestingly enough, it was a very long meeting, but it was devoted mainly to internal matters, you know, housekeeping matters, which I don't like to bore you with, but extremely useful. Went for almost two hours plus. It was a very good meeting. One of the things we did is that we approved the appointment of Ms. Alice Joslow to represent District Two. District Two is Briar Cliff Manor, Ossining, and Terrytown. That has been vacant for some time, but we managed to get an excellent candidate for that. We are still searching for a suitable candidate to represent District Five, which is Amunk, Bedford Village, Pleasantville, and Poundridge. For some reason, we have not had any luck, but we are searching for that. And all the GPS tools are on, so hope to identify a good candidate down the line. Now, I'd like to assure this board that our board takes seriously the question of sexual harassment in the workplace. This issue, there's no particular issue that came up within WLS on this, but at our last meeting, it was felt that it is important to emphasize this and to ensure that there's no misunderstanding about that. That all the members of the board should be properly informed about the policy, WLS policy on that, as well as the state policy on this. And therefore, it was suggested and approved that there should be a special training, special seminar, whatever it is, for all the board members who should take that and be fully informed about this policy of sexual harassment. By the way, all the policies that are adopted by the WLS are posted. Policies and bylaws are posted on the WLS website. So, if you have any idle moment, I would suggest that you go and look at these policies and acquaint yourself with it. Now, like everybody in the state, especially us in the library business, we are waiting for what the state is going to do with the budget. The budget is supposed to have been adopted on the first of April, I guess, but the politicians are still discussing a number of issues. A number of them not quite related to the budget, but anyway. So, that is holding up the budget, and we have a stake in that. But in the meantime, we in the board, and you as well, have been encouraged to talk to our legislators and anybody else who can support our budgetary course, so that the impressive support that we have continues and is reflected in the budgetary appropriation. We don't want any more cuts. We'd like to make improvements on this. So, we are waiting and hoping for the best. Now, it appears that all is quiet on the Monvernon Library front. I understand that considerable progress is being made and that the documents requested of the library are being prepared and this matter should be resolved pretty soon. Our director, Terry, has been very much involved in that, and the members of our board have been following the issues. We really would like to have Monvernon stand up on its feet and become a full, active member of our community once again. Now, but, there is that bleak issue coming from Mamaroneck. Our board has not been, our board was immediately briefed on this in a rather sketchy way, soon after the news broke. So, by that time, we did not have the details about what the issue was, what is the amount of money involved, and who was responsible, and so on, so on. It was very sketchy. But since then, there's been quite a lot of information in the media, and some details are coming up. Quite impressive is the support that the mayor, Mamaroneck, and some other legislators, I think including Dinapoli in the state comptroller is here. They're trying to give all the support to the library, particularly to ensure that they don't run out of money and they don't close, because that would be devastating for the library and for the community. So, my hope is that this matter is going to be aggressively addressed and soon resolved. As the saying goes, the way through is the only way out. Now, the next point is the strategic plan. The WLS, as you really informed this board, adopted our strategic plan last year, and we circulated that. But there are two things I want to say about the strategic plan. One is that the strategic plan is like a New Year resolution. You forget about it two weeks after you have adopted it. So, I think once the plan is adopted, the tendency is to put it in the drawer somewhere and carry on with the day-to-day business. We don't want that to happen, at least within WLS. As a result, therefore, and I chaired the committee that worked on this, we made sure that the strategic plan is kept alive and that it is being implemented by the relevant departments within WLS and that the plan is circulated to all our directors and perhaps incorporated in their activity to the extent possible. So, we keep it alive. So, the executive team within the board has been tasked with the responsibility of ensuring, monitoring the implementation of the strategic plan. And so, the executive is going to meet next week or towards the end of the month to start the review, to talk with the different directors and to see to what extent the different elements, it's a very small strategic plan, only three points, so we wanted to see to what extent these plans are being reflected in our day-to-day operations. Now, another aspect of the strategic plan is that we should be prepared to deal with the unknown. We, for the plan, tried to forecast what may happen, but we really don't, there's many things outside our view which cannot necessarily be taken within the plan, but for which we should be prepared. I mean, a case in point is, for example, the COVID. I mean, five years ago, when we were planning or drawing up the plan, no one knew that the COVID was going to come and throw everything AWI, so we had to prepare to deal with that. Or the cyber attack, for example. That might come in a massive wave, which can throw all our operations out of whack. And so, a certain state of preparedness alongside our concerns in implementing the plan should be taken into account. And as far as WLS is concerned, that point is being made. I keep making that all the time within the board. And I think our IT people and the different departments within WLS are very aware of this. So, that is the, another issue related to the plan again. We were suggested that while we concentrate on implementing the plan, we should at the same time be scanning the horizon for any developments that might be coming up affecting our operations. A case in point, for example, this issue of the book burning. It's not a hot issue here yet, but I think in some states it's beginning to be an issue. And some libraries are beginning to grapple with this problem. Thankfully, that is not yet an issue in our area. But I think it's good to be prepared, just in case it becomes, because it's a political issue. And for some reason, somebody might want to score a point, and is that, I could raise it, and blah, 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 blah. So, to some extent, I think this board should be aware that problems like this or any other issue could crop up in the horizon that can seriously or not seriously affect our operations. So, I think my forty-five minutes is over. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Frances. Do you have questions, anybody?
I just would like to make a few comments. I think it's really interesting that Frances detailed the issue of sexual harassment training and workshop. And I'm happy to say that our library is up to date. As a matter of fact, last Wednesday, we had a program for all staff, full-time and part-time, here in the theater on Wednesday morning. So, we had an attorney from our firm come and speak and talk about all the elements that relate to this issue. So, I think it's really important, and why you mentioned it. I'm also, it's painful to talk about what's happening at the Mamaroneck Library. It's just such a tragedy. It's a shame. I have been in touch with the director, who I know a little bit.
Yes.
We exchanged words of support. Actually, I said, you know, our library would assist if we could in any way, and she was grateful for that. When this all happened, Whitney and I had a conversation, and then involved Jean about our library and our financial situation, because I think it's relevant, you know, when you think about it. You know, the first question that one might ask is, could it happen here? And our financial controls are quite different than the financial controls that were apparently in place at the Mamaroneck Library. And I worked on a document. We brought Jean into it, and we both together worked through it. And we have a document in your folders that talk about the financial controls here at our library. And just, I won't read through it, but I will say that the hallmark of what happens here is that there is a significant checks and balance process in place where one person or a few people do not control it. That goes, things that go on here go over to the school district. Our treasurer is the New Rochelle School District Treasurer as well, and they have auditing procedures on a daily basis and as well as an annual basis. And the auditing firms are not connected. If you look at this document, it may answer any questions that you have. But it's just a real shame, and we're all hoping that, given the support that seems to be moving towards the Mamaroneck Library, they'll be able to initially resolve their financial issues and be able to stay open, and then deal with everything else that follows. I just wanted to mention both of those issues.
And we've also recently asked, I think we just started receiving bank statements.
Audits.
And the audits.
And the bank statements. We were told that we would have a bank statement tonight. The school district wasn't able to follow through, but we'll get it for you and we'll make it available. And I think it's, I think the more insight and, you know, involvement that the board and other entities take, it's important, because, you know, we want to all feel comfortable that the monies that are given to us by our community are being appropriately used.
Correct. And I think in requesting things like bank statements, things like audits, there's not the pressure to have real-time information constantly. It's consistent information and the ability to regularly compare apples to apples and look through and make a, you know, just kind of eyeball it. And, you know, it's our duty as elected officials and as trustees to, you know, keep tabs. It's one of the main things that we're supposed to be doing. It is nice that we have a, there's a big buffer between trustees and the actual, you know, functionality of the library financials. You know, inasmuch as we, you know, touch the money, we view it from afar. We get, you know, we look to our staff and the school staff, really, who takes care of it. But I think this is just, we should all be learning from our neighbors and, you know, think good thoughts for them, that they can square this away. It's really devastating for that community. So, thank you. Tom, did you have more to say about?
One small thing, just for information. Well, two weeks ago or so, we experienced the bank failures, Silicon Valley Bank and a series of bank failures.
Sorry, bank failures, yes.
And we in the board, WLS, immediately took action in terms of asking our financial officer to look into this and give us a briefing to what extent our finances are safe. And the briefing, main conclusion was that our finances are safe with TD Bank and et cetera, so nothing to worry about. And I hope members of this board attended the training yesterday on the fiscal responsibility of board members.
Was it yesterday?
Yeah, it was yesterday from ten to eleven. It's going to be recorded.
There's another one coming up.
Is it recorded?
Yeah, it's going to be recorded. It's by the comptroller.
Right.
The auditor, Mr., whatever his name is.
What I can do is I can look for it, and if I find it, I can send the link to you.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be available on record, I think, in a week or so.
And in that vein, Frances, the trustee handbook, book club.
Yes.
The board-director relationship. The next one is the eighteenth Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, that's different. But that of yesterday was on fiscal responsibility. Interesting enough, talking about Mamaroneck and all that, the fiscal responsibilities of board members. And it was very, very pertinent.
Yep, very good. Well, thank you for.
Take a look at that. Thanks.
Thank you. And the last thing I wanted to say about your report related to all the work that you put into the strategic planning process. That's exactly what we did here. Elizabeth, our assistant director, has taken the hell, you know, the lead in finding and compiling groups of people to tackle specific components and then continuously refer back. And ultimately, when we're doing this again in two, three years, they're building, you know, a benchmark, and they're building a track record, and they're going to be able, all of us together, with the work that Elizabeth and Tom and everyone are doing, will be able to look back and say, what have we accomplished of the things we said we wanted to? How relevant is it still? Have priorities changed? And, you know, are these unknowns now becoming known? And now we're dealing with things that we didn't foresee or did foresee, and now here they are coming to pass? So, nice work. And I know that it's, it's really, the implementation is everything, right? So, thank you for sharing that. Good. Next up is president's report. That's me. I was just going to share, you know, kind of some words of comfort with respect to the difference between our library, Mamaroneck's library, just to the public, but Tom really did that already, so I don't need to take up more time. And when we kind of move through the committee reports and we get to the budget committee, I will share more just by way of an update and getting our ducks in a row with respect to the approved budget and what that means, because we've gotten, finally got some numbers around that to share, but just as of like moments ago. So, we'll put a pin in that for a few minutes. And with that, I will pass things on to Tom.
Thanks, Whitney.
Thank you.
I'm happy to report that many of our projects that we have undertaken are moving forward. Some are nearly at completion. In regards to one of our major efforts, the New York State Grant with the foundation matching grant, the third floor renovation is moving along, actually fairly quickly. We have now replaced the carpet, which was no small task, because our guys made the effort, saved money to remove it. And we have new carpet down upstairs. It looks amazingly better. It's amazing what new flooring can do. And in the offing is the process of creating new study rooms and a new conference room, painting, waiting for our furniture to arrive, working on things that relate to electrical low voltage, so we have more power and internet access throughout that floor, changing out the lighting to the LED. And so, it's really exciting. We're moving forward, and I'm hoping, just keep my fingers crossed, that maybe by the end of the summer, early fall, the project will be over. So, that's really good news. Let's see, in terms of our, the other side of that year's grant process, which was replacing all three air conditioning units at the Huguenot Children's Library, that is moving forward also. Our contractor has gotten the permits from the city of New Rochelle. The units are on order. And given the heat that we're experiencing, we hope that they arrive soon and have them installed. So, that's really good news. Another project that we're just completing, it was not a New York State Grant project, but it was a project that's funded by the board through our capital monies, is the renovation of the Community Relations Office. And that was done, it's really, really in a very tight time period. The staff is ready to move in, maybe next week. And we started last week, so everything just sort of lined up the way we wanted it, which is exciting. We're waiting on our adult services office too as well. That will take a little bit longer, since things were just recently approved, but we've been told that furniture should arrive in mid-June. It's amazing to see how fast things are moving now, because during the pandemic time, we all remember, it was really sluggish, really slow. So, it's exciting to see that office transformed. Both of those workspaces had not really been renovated since the building opened in the late seventies. And it's, you know, we were prudent and careful and used state contracts and got bids for all this work, so I'm really excited our staff can work, be working in an environment that's professional and appropriate. So, there's that. Our fire-stopping project that we have been talking about for quite a while is hopefully ready to start with contracts signed. The contractor is working on a schedule in regards to timeframes to do the work. And so, we're trying to begin the process of coordinating with them. And it might mean some minor dislocation for us, but we think we can deal with it. So, that's also ready to start. And let's see. As you folks know, we also are, we're lucky enough to receive New York State Grants for, most recently, for a noise abatement project in the main library. And that's moving forward. We hope to hear, within the next few months, that the award is formally been made. In terms of our Huguenot Children's Library, there's a number of more minor renovations there. We, for the first time, had to work through a New York State Historic Preservation Office for this building, and we did it, and that was a good achievement. And so, we're hoping again for that money to arrive sometime in June, and we'll be excited to see that project start as well. Just see what else. Terms of programs, you know, we're coming to the end of tax season. And as you folks know, arguably, our most successful program in our library year after year has been the AARP Tax Prep Program, where these amazing AARP volunteers give their time, two days a week, from nine o'clock to two, though they never leave it, they're usually leaving after three o'clock. And it's been busy, certainly far busier than the last, previous COVID years. Not quite as busy as pre-pandemic, but we're hoping that we'll build back up to that. The other program that I'm really excited about, that our library has been a participant in for the third year, it began two years ago, is the Five Town One Book Program, which is sponsored by Cure, which is a coalition for understanding racism through education. This year's theme has been the exploration of the life and work of Lorraine Hansberry. And of course, she was the amazing author, who among other things wrote Raisin in the Sun. And so, our five Sound Shore communities have participated, as well as Krotwen, which was Lorraine Hansberry's final home. So, the end of the program, the series with all six libraries, will be this Saturday. If you folks have time, if you come here, it'll be in this theater from three to five. And it will be relating to, really talking about the legacy of Ms. Hansberry, as well as a theatrical program highlighting redlining, which we know was a horrible thing that went on in terms of limiting housing to people of color, et cetera. So, that will be the culminating event, this Saturday at three o'clock. It will be available, seats here in the theater, as well as streaming too. So, if you're interested, I'd ask you to participate. See what else. We've already talked about the Library Trustee Handbook, which is the next, the next program is Tuesday, the eighteenth, which is the Board Director Relationship. And there are more that are coming in June. There'll be financial planning and budgeting. In August, strategic planning, maybe we could teach that one. And the last one is really important, I think really important, and that is equity diversion, inclusion, access, and justice. And that will be in October, October seventeenth of this year. Let's see what else.
One more in December after that.
Yeah, I don't, you know.
It is. I'll tell you what it is. I put it in my calendar. It's called, it's on the Tuesday, December nineteenth. It's called, similar to, I think, the one that was yesterday. It's called Financing and Manag-, oh, no, sorry. Financing and Managing Construction Projects.
Oh, that's a good one.
I think I was talking with somebody, maybe Lucille? Lucille in the ether? About how I might, I might hit up the WLS folks sooner rather than December to get some of their insight on that, because I think it's relevant to us right now.
The other trustee opportunity that was just shared today is that on May seventeenth, at Westchester Community College in Valhalla, there'll be an all-day program relating to, I guess, the official titles as sponsored by New York State's Attorney General Letitia James, Doing Well While Doing Good. It starts at twelve in the afternoon, and it goes through.
One o'clock.
Yeah.
No, it starts at one and goes to four thirty.
One to four thirty.
Four thirty.
Yeah.
Registration opens at twelve thirty.
So, and if you, if a trustee were to participate, you would achieve your mandated continually added, you know, responsibilities. So, it might be of interest. And let's see. Friends of the New Rochelle Public Library continue to move forward. They're an amazing group that just manages these donations with not a large volunteer base, but they do, and they provide extraordinary financial support for us. This year, it'll total over seventy thousand dollars. And you can donate on a limited basis, two bags or two boxes per visit. So, remember that. And of course, their store is open on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Saturdays. And last but not least, our foundation, amazing organization that provides so much support and advocacy for us. and advocacy for us, had, of course, a very successful game on event. We're waiting to hear about the, how successful it was, but according to Foundation Board members at their last meeting, they thought that they did better than expected in regards to revenue, revenue generated after expense covered. And their next board meeting is in May, on May 15th. And that is it for my report. And I have a personnel report that's very brief, too.
Excellent. Please proceed.
Thanks. And this is on the board action, and it's just, we have a new hire. A woman, Natalie Damien Valencia, is our new children's room page. Her salary is $15 an hour. Her start date was April 3rd, and so I would ask the board to make a motion to approve the employment of Ms. Damien Valencia.
And we have a quorum. I'd love to make a motion to approve the appointment of Natalie Damien Valencia at the salary stated by Tom, with her start date of April 3rd. Can I get a second, please? All in favor?
Hi.
Can I vote?
No.
Oh.
But I'm glad that you would have said yes in line, and, and, and supportive, in support of Natalie's appointment, Lucille. Nonetheless, great, so thank you.
I'm not done.
So yep, that passes.
Thank you.
Welcome to Natalie, and thank you, Tom. Is that it?
Yes, it is.
That's it for now? Great. Assistant Directors Report, we have Elizabeth.
So last month, I reported that we learned that 45% of New Rochelle residents are library cardholders, and that's a pretty good number. We've been digging into the data a little bit further and found that there is one ZIP code in particular where we could do some outreach, and that's 10805. So now that we've kind of pinpointed that area, we are looking to do some outreach in that area, and I think all of that is part of our goals in our strategic plan. The children's room continues to be busy as usual, and we've done, gone back to some outreach events. We did two this month, one at Columbus Parent Cares Resource Fair and a parent workshop at the Ward Elementary School. So we are trying to get the word out about the library and the services that we provide. The Adult Services Department, in the midst of renovation, kind of renewal of like the third floor, we're also looking at new responsibilities and sort of changes in responsibilities, and we're really looking at new responsibilities through the eyes of the strategic plan, right? Because as we all know, our staff is like our biggest asset, and we really want to invest in what they do and to support like their strengths and make sure that their strengths and interests match what they're actually doing at work. So we're really looking at revamping their responsibilities and making it more equitable in terms of what they do and how they provide for our patrons. We recently did a tour of the teen services and teen, teen room for an English class from the New Rochelle High School. These were new residents and sort of new immigrants to New Rochelle, and they were really just thrilled with the space and really excited that all of these wonderful services are here for them. And the teen services is now in the midst of planning this really great summer reading club program for this, for the summer, and we are now on our way to do some great things. We applied for a grant from Dollar General. The Dollar General Literacy Foundation provides grants to different communities for literacy programs. The library cannot apply for the grant as a library, because we're a tax-based organization, but we are doing it through the foundation, and hopefully next month, I can report some good news. The grant is for $10,000, and we will really be supporting GD classes, GD readiness and pre-GD readiness programs, because a lot of kids that are adults that go into our GD classes are generally not ready, so what we want to do is prepare them to go into GD classes. So that is a big thing that we are focusing in right now. And the strategic planning work and the teamwork has, has continued, our workspace is, is really filling up with like reports on what they're doing, what they're planning, what their ideas are, and also it's a space that hosts different trainings and webinars and handouts and things like that. So it's, it's coming along, and it's really great to see people excited and working across departments and working across different skill levels. So it's been a great thing to see, and I think it's also great to be a part of that team-building exercise as well. So more to report next month.
Excellent. Thank you, Elizabeth. Any questions on any of what Elizabeth reported? I'm just so happy to see where you're finding holes, like you're able to note ZIP code and write and to fill in those blanks and try to bring that area up to everywhere else. Are you noting general trends in specific areas or kind of across, flat across the board?
Right. I mean, we're, we're seeing like where our cardholders are, when they're not using us, which libraries they're using, all that kind of stuff. So it's, it's been really interesting, and you know, we need to kind of chain the tide a little bit, because we need to find out why our library cardholders are not using us besides the basic, you know, there's no parking thing, but.
Big one, that's a big one.
That is a big one, right. But, but everything else, I think it's, it's really kind of robust usage and engagement, which is really exciting to see, and see how we can, I mean, I think the sort of fallout of the Mamaronek Library is going to have some ramifications for us, and we need to be prepared for that. And I think a lot of the staff are talking about what that means for us in terms of our workload, what it means in terms of like serving Mamaronek patrons and all of that. So it's, it's an interesting time for learning, but sad for the town of Mamaronek.
I guess we could track usage from Mamaronek too, right, over time?
Yes, right.
See if there has any. But it's also interesting where, where we stand, to know where we stand. I don't know if Francis has this information, but library cardholders compared to other towns and.
Oh yeah, we can certainly get that.
We have that, yeah.
Yeah, we can certainly get that.
I think our cardholder base is over 44,000 right now, which is fairly significant, and we can compare it to other WLS libraries.
Yeah, we can, I can furnish a report next month from that.
I don't know if anyone wants to nerd out on this much like.
If I recall, at the PDL.
PLDA.
Yeah, PLDA meeting one time. Anyway, yeah. I was going to ask, what practical use do you make of that information?
Which information?
About cardholders, about attendance, you know, the kinds.
Well, I, I think what we want to do is like analyze that data to see like where the gaps are and where the barriers are, so if we're finding that, you know, most of New Rochelle card residents are going to this branch, we need to find out why, and things like that. And then we can maybe correct that. I think it's really important to see, I mean, I, I think it's important to use data, really, to figure out how we can sort of change things around, because what we really want is residents to be cardholders and to, to be engaged in the library.
Let me come in on that.
Don't hold me to it, but I, if I recall my memory is correct on this.
Francis, we've talked into the.
Forty-five percent or so of the Westchester residents are library cardholders, if I recall that figure.
But that, that figures for New Rochelle, so I don't know. That might, that's a coincidence.
I'm just trying to give you the country, counter-wide picture. I, I'll check it out with Terry.
Beth wanted to speak. Francis, could you pass with the mic?
Thanks, Francis. No, I was just gonna say, so it, it's not a negative, it's not a negative, 10805 is the smallest ZIP code of New Rochelle. And most of 10805 is South End, and a lot of the apartment buildings are co-ops. So I don't know if that means anything, but that's really the makeup of 10805.
Right, but there are still residents that we, we want to make, we want to make some inroads into that.
Yeah. It's just, you're not doing a bad job.
No, no, absolutely not.
If it was 10801, you might say, oh, that's off, but you know.
No, it's true, but the thing is like, you know, we can still engage them through our digital content and things like that.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure that everybody in New Rochelle is aware of the library and comes and uses us and knows about us and, and supports us.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Good. That brings us to our committee reports and budget committee. I'm, first up, that's me. So I will start by clarifying some of the points we made last month, following the board's support of a 6.87% increase. We were able to get the numbers around that as of moments ago. It is a 6.87% increase in the average homeowner's annual tax burden, and our favorite number that we always like to share is that it is a $24.07 increase from last year. That's about $2 a month more than, than the average homeowner paid last year, taxpayer paid last year. So again, the majority, the vast majority of the increase, which the total number of the increase is $417,000, sorry, $417,724.69. The vast majority of that are contractual obligations to our staff, that is salary increase and, and a 12% medical, generally medical health insurance increase that we have no control over. Everything else, I can, I, I will further break it down. We have an increase in the Power Authority of the State of New York PASNE, that is $38,473.50, I believe. Jean, please correct me if I'm wrong, that we did not account for that increase last year. So for several years, it's coming home to roost. We, we have to be the piper or the PASNE as the case may be. We also want to acknowledge our security staff, and we are providing an increase that amount to our security staff, that is a $48,056.35 increase. There is, but besides those pretty much immovable components, we have two elements that we really, really felt were important. We solicited, thanks to Tom and Elizabeth and Jean and the staff at the library, all of the reasoning and narrative and arguments and support points for why they felt these, these elements were important. So what I just shared with you, the vast majority, again, are the salaries and benefits increase were contractually obligated. That's about 75% of the increase. We are adding a new position. That new position is a full-time staffer, and that is for the, this is for children's services, and this is, this is the result of our success in implementing components of our strategic plan, right? We have more interest, we have more success with our programming, more interest in our programming, more attendance. That means we need to better serve our patrons. We share the data all the time, that we have the, I think, lowest per capita expenditure given our usage. I think it's second lowest.
Second lowest.
Second lowest in the entire county. We're 38 out of 39, which means we're already operating on a shoestring. I think we, we do really well with the, with the resources that we have, and there's no waste. And we can feel really proud of that, because we have really great, you know, usage, we have really, you know, robust cardholdership. We hope to increase all of that. Guess what? That means that we're going to need to provide services that meet the needs. And, and, and this is just, this is true, but you know, this is a, the, the beauty of our wonderful institution of the library is that, you know, we're obviously always aiming to meet the needs of our patrons and, and surpass them, because we need to be, you know, we can't be lagging, we need to be helping people keep up and, and thrive, and that is really a marker of a thriving community. The last thing I will mention is, and this Elizabeth and Tom know this breaks my heart, but we are asking for an $18,865.17 increase in library materials, which is less than half of what we, we wanted. Oftentimes, we'll ask for material, we'll be, we'll be asked to include a materials line item, and sometimes we just, we can't, or we've really cut it back. I asked if we could keep, you know, try to keep some, so that we are, again, meeting the, the needs of our patrons and making sure we have fresh materials, that we're not stagnating in providing, you know, the latest and greatest to the best of our ability. So again, between the new full-time staff member and an $18,865, $18,800, I never say these right, I'm so sorry. Take up your time with my blundering, but you know, we feel that these are really important asks, and as we go out to the community over the next month, we hope that we will find agreement and support for that. That's my spiel. I, I could go on and on, as you know, but I won't. Any questions, thoughts? Cheers, hooray, for the library.
Definitely.
Right. I, I think we all feel like we understand why we need to ask for this amount this year, and we try every year to go as low as possible. We recognize the burden that places on the taxpayer. I don't think we've, I've never been on the board, this is my, I think, sixth budget cycle. I don't think we've ever started the process without looking at a flat budget. And we, you know, we obviously have to fulfill our obligations contractually, but we need to make sure we're being fair to our, our taxpayers and providing them with what they deserve, what, with what our community members deserve. Great, I will be quiet-ish and talk about buildings and grounds. We have no updates, no updates right now. Community relations.
Yeah.
Please.
I always get to do the fun report.
It is so fun, I love this part.
So this is just to talk about how great the library is and nothing compares to Tom.
Please.
So I get to report on the great events that have happened in the library in March and April so far, and Tom and Elizabeth mentioned some of them already, so I won't, I won't double dip, but generally speaking, all the great, the great programming, the film series, the yoga classes, the lectures are going on. One thing that I do want to highlight for April is the April school break, because that's always such a, such a great thing that the library puts on for the kids that are out of school and may not have much going on. So the library really, again, between April 3rd and 7th, provided all kinds of programs that were very well attended. I don't think we have the, the attendance numbers yet, but I'll, I will update you on the numbers, but I was told that the, they were all very busy, and it's just great to get kids still thinking and, and moving during that week versus just sitting at home on the devices, which they were probably, they're like my kids, that's what they would do. So, so it's just, I love that the library always steps in when there's, there's a break in school and, and does continuous education, so that's great. And then there's lots of great events coming up. I'll mention a few of them. You already mentioned the Cure event on Saturday, so I don't have to repeat that. But the Sunday Concert Series continues, which I think is always very well attended. The next one is this Sunday, April 16th, with the Hudson Valley Chamber Musicians. And then the Young Musicians of Westchester are going to be, that's for fourth graders from Columbus Elementary School, I'm sure they'll be super cute, that's April 24th. And there's going to be a Meet the Authors Day, totally selfless plug on that one. April 29th, it'll be here, I think it'll be in this space.
I believe so.
Seventeen, well, more than 17 local authors who will come and bring their work and will be here to speak to patrons about.
Are you among them, Rhiannon?
I am.
Oh, you are.
Excellent. But it'll be funny, I think it'll be fun to mingle with other.
What time was this?
I think it's from 1 to 4. And so we bring in our books, but also just having conversations and meeting other local authors, which will be fun. So that's on April 29th. And I just want to talk very quickly about the amazing job that the marketing team continues to do with just going out and, and highlighting all these great, great programs that are available, and now they have additional help from Geraldo.
Coraldo.
Coraldo.
There he is. Yes.
Social media coordinator, so we'll be even better in, in promoting all the, the great events. And the community relationship team continues to go out to work with other organizations in the community and, and cross, kind of work on different events, which is great. And some of them that they're working on currently that I wanted to highlight is the Juneteenth, so the, the Relationship Building Committee from the libraries on the June Juneteenth, so the, the Relationship Building Committee from the libraries on the Juneteenth Planning Committee, so they're working with all other organizations, organizations in New Rochelle to put on programs all throughout the month of June. And I will, I believe that the, the library will host children's paper quilting workshops here and at the children's library, drumming, workshop performance, jazz concerts, so all kinds of great programming as part of the Juneteenth month or month of events. And then also, they're participating in the citywide planning of Earth Day, which will be, and then I think there will be, they're doing outreach at the event, I think, on April 22nd at the Anderson Plaza from 12 to 4.
If I could add, a shameless plug. Rhiannon shared how successful our most recent school vacation week was, and it's a tradition that we've been able to engage families who otherwise may not have active days during the week, and we have all kinds of programs, and our staff works extraordinarily hard. And quite a bit of the financial support for these programs comes from our friends, and I think our, the friends are worth a plug. They work really hard selling those books, and they give us quite a bit of money so that we can provide great entertaining educational programs for our young families. Wanted to, just wanted to thank the friends.
Thank you, friends.
Yeah, they're amazing.
Always, they are amazing. Take a tour, go with Tom and take a tour of the basement downstairs and see.
You, you wouldn't believe it.
We have like a library beneath the library.
I know.
Yeah. It's amazing.
A book dungeon.
Best kind of dungeon.
And I can just quickly add, the Beat Up Help and Learning Center continues all the great programs. You already talked about the, the tax support, and they've been really active doing that, and Elizabeth already mentioned, which I just love, the, the English New Language class, the, the new residents, the kids came, and I think it gave out 21 new library cards to the kids, which is great. And then all the great online tutoring sessions that they provide, the GD Academy Digital and Adult Literacy, the lending of the Chromebooks and the hotspots, I think even more gaining in popularity. So just lots of support and, and great help that the center is providing to all the patrons. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you. I don't think we have any finance committee update. Corey's not here. Personnel Committee, Lucille?
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy Committee?
Nothing.
Nothing right now?
Could I?
Yeah.
Just very briefly, in regards to policy, we have been in the process of reviewing our room reservation policy. I shared it with Whitney, I want to share it with the policy committee, and there was a team of staff members involving Elizabeth, Lisa, Ed, Toby, and myself, who worked together to try to make some needed changes, provisions to the policy. And it will come to the policy committee, and it will come to the board for your consideration. It's an important policy, and I just want to highlight that it's in the pipeline, and thank all of our, all of our people who are involved. We also involved our, our attorney, and there's also, one of our staff members has a spouse who is somewhat of an expert in this area, provided some insight, too. So that was pro bono.
We love pro bono legal work. I would also say, yes, I saw this, thank you, Tom, and I have comments on it.
Okay, good.
I think we should try to aim, if possible, for the May or June, but it, it, it deserves careful consideration.
I think so, it's really important.
But within the next two months, we will be looking for, for discussion and eventual approval. Thank you. Thanks for everybody's time on that policy. I know that this has been in the works for a while. Special Projects Committee, that would be Daniel, and we haven't heard anything about that. So that brings us to, any questions on committee stuff? Nope. That brings us to public discussion. Three speakers and the public to be heard, beginning with Cynthia Gladman. Do you want to say anything? You don't want to? Okay. That's what, that's.
Is there a question?
See, in case you want to say things.
Right, right.
Okay, good, well, thank you. And Wayne Henderson? Beautiful printing, I, I love your handwriting. Unrelated to this whole thing, but I just have to say, and Fela? Hello, Fela. Fela Cortez, do you have anything to say? You just put your name on the paper?
Oh, no.
You don't want to say anything?
Oh, well.
Do you want to? You don't have to.
No, I'm, I think I do.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, thank you. So nice to meet you all, everybody.
Welcome.
And any other comments? This is a good old-fashioned hour-long meeting, everyone loves that, I know. Good? Okay, great, then, can I have a motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion to adjourn, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Good, all in favor?
Hi.
Are you opposed? Nope?
No.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.